And sisters, we are going to read the theme verse once again all together please.
प्रीताज भाई, दीदी पहनियो रो, हमें फेरी बनी है हमलों के चीज़, टीम बच्चा छो, ते पढ़ने छो, एक साथ मिली गना।
I am not going to give the reference because by now you should know what it is.
आप मोता बड़ा भंडी रह, खाना बटा हो, और आप आए ले समता तबले चाल पाई सकुन भैया को ला।
So let us all turn to the theme verse and read together please.
राहुनोस, हम यो टीम बस पटा हो, वो सभी जन्म मिली गना पड़ो। तरफ़ पहिले, परमश्री कुछ राज्य रवा, दारू पक्की कोची गरक, सभे रोग, हमें उधर इतनी नचा।
So taking it from Matthew chapter 6:33, seek ye first the kingdom of God, we are looking at the seven priorities in life.
मैंने मेरा मत्ती रसित सुसमचा छो को, जुन्नी 31 पथ पड़ी गना हमिले छी, हमलो जियोन ना, लेवनु पढ़े, दिनु पढ़े, जुन्नी प्रमुखता को पुरो, हमें हेरी रहे छो।
We have looked at the first priority to be the savior, making the Lord Jesus the savior of our lives.
राहुनोस, हमें हमिले प्रमुखता ले हेरे देची हो, प्रभु सुकृष्ट लाची, हमलो जियोन को मुक्तिदाता बनाउनो।
We gave three reasons to make him the savior of our lives.
राहुनोस, हमलो जियोन को मुक्तिदाता बनाउनो पुनि ते हमिले तीन ओड़ा कारण होर दिए।
He is the exclusive savior.
राहुनोस, शेख तमे विशेष प्रकार को मुक्तिदाता होन्छ।
He is everyone's savior.
राहुनोस, हरेक को पुपसमने वाला।
And he is the factual savior.
राहुनोस, उत्तमे प्रवाह कारी मुक्तिदाता।
Now in this session, we are going to very briefly consider the second priority in life.
राहुनोस, यो जुन्नी यो भागमा छी, हमिले छी, जुन्नी दोस्तों, जुन्नी प्रमुखता, हमलो जियोन को विषय में, हमें एकदमे संचित में हेरे छो।
Let us turn to Isaiah chapter 45 and read verse 5 please.
यसे आप 45 को पांच बात अनपढ़ने छो।
Isaiah chapter 45 and verse 5 altogether.
यसे आप 45 को पांच बात सभी जन्म मिली गना, मो परम प्रमुख हो, जो की परमेश्वर यहो हो। भाई, कुरे एक परमेश्वर छैन, तिमिले मोला नाची ना तापनी, ओइले तिम्मो कमर पासे को छो।
Yes dear brothers and sisters, the second priority in our life should be the supreme sovereign lord.
राहुनोस, प्रिय दाज भाई, दीदी पहनियो रो, हमलो जुन्नी जियोन को दोस्तों, जुन्नी प्रमुखता छ, केची हो, सब बंदा सर्वच्छ, और सर्व बोम जुन्नी परमेश्वर मुहुंछ।
Here in Isaiah chapter 45 verse 5, the Lord is saying, "I am the Lord, the Lord Jehovah."
यसे आप 45 को पांच बात में हेरे छो, बनु भनी रह रहे छो, कि मो परम प्रमुख हो, जो की परमेश्वर यहो हो।
There is no one else beside me.
राहुनोस, भाई, कुरे कुरे छैन।
I am the only one.
राहुनोस, केवल मत्री हो।
I am Jehovah.
यहो हो।
I am the self-sufficient God.
राहुनोस, एकदमे सर्व एकदम पूर्ण परमेश्वर।
I am the self-existing God.
राहुनोस, हरेक चम्मो मो पाई नि परमेश्वर।
So when we look at the priorities in our lives.
जब हमिले आपने जियोन मो प्रमुखता ले हेर रह छो।
Just as we give the Lord Jesus as the savior of our lives.
जुन्नी प्रकारले प्रमुख सुकृष्ट लाय, हमलो आपने जियोन को मुक्तिदाता को रूप में हमें छिन रह छो।
It is of also, it is of also utmost importance to know Jesus as the Lord of our lives.
यो नि एकदमे प्रमुखता एकदम महत्वपूर्ण हो, कि प्रमुख सुकृष्ट लाची, हमलो जियोन को परमेश्वर को रूप में हमिले छी मुपसा।
So that is why the second priority of our life, we are giving it the name, the supreme, the sovereign lord.
राहुनोस, इस कारणले गणत्री, दोस्तों, जुन्नी प्रमुखता मा, हमिले यानी आपने जियोन को प्रमुखता को विषय में हेरे रह केरी छी, हमिले छी, सर्वच्छ, और सब बंदा, ऊच्चा मरने परमेश्वर को विषय में भारत।
Dear brothers and sisters, today we are willing to make the Lord Jesus the savior of our life and to get a ticket to heaven.
राहुनोस, प्रिय दाज भाई, दीदी पहनियो रो, आज अपनी जब हमिले प्रमुख सुकृष्ट लाय, आपने जियोन को मुक्तिदाता को रूप में हमिले बनाउन, गए रह छो, बने हमिले छी, स्वर्ग, राज में बस नि तो टिकित प्राप्त करे।
We want to make the Lord Jesus the savior of our life and to get all our sins cleaned up.
राहुनोस, हमिले छी प्रमुख सुकृष्ट लाय, हमलो जियोन को मुक्तिदाता को रूप में, स्वीकार भरी गना, हमलो सभे पार पटा हमें सुद।
But many of us do not want to make the Lord Jesus the Lord of our life.
राहुनोस, हमें मत, देरे मत, मैं ऐस्ता समझ जस्ती छी, आपने जियोन मा छी, प्रमुख सुकृष्ट लाची, आपने जियोन को प्रमुख बने रह वाले बनाउन।
If we want to make the Lord Jesus the Lord of our life, that means we need to give total control and authority to the Lord Jesus.
राहुनोस, यदि हमिले आपने जियोन को परमेश्वर, प्रमुख सुकृष्ट लापरंग परमेश्वर तो हमिले दिन्छ बने, आते संपूर्ण नियंत्रण पर हमिले वाला दिन पस।
The Lord Jesus should be able to have access to every area in our lives.
प्रमुख सुकृष्ट को मा छी, यो प्रकार को वहाँ छूट हुनु पस, कि वहाँ छी, हमलो जियोन को हरेक जग मा छी, वहाँ प्रमेश्वर बनु सपोर्ट।
He should have total control, authority over every little detail of our lives.
राहुनोस, हमलो जियोन को सानु बंदा सानु कुरा पनि वहाँ को अधिकार हुनु पस।
In other words, we say, we must allow the Lord Jesus to interfere into our lives.
और को जुन्नी सब बंदा बनु बने, हमलो जियोन को हरेक कुर मा छी, वहाँ को एकदमे मत एस्तु कुरु पस।
And this is something that believers, you and I do not like to do.
यो एस्तु कुरा कुरची तबला हमिले छी, मन परम देनो।
We may like to call him the Lord of our lives.
राहुनोस, हमिले उन्नु सक्षम वाला, हमलो जियोन को ईश्वर प्रमुख बने पुकारला।
But practically, we do not want to give him the total control and authority of our lives.
बेवारी ग्रुप में हेरे बने, हमिले छी, हमलो जियोन को संपूर्ण नियंत्रण वाला दिन छान।
We want to control most part of our own lives.
तिन्हों ने वाले छी, हमलो जियोन को हरेक भाग नियंत्रण छान हुन्छ।
And only when it is necessary or needed and when we are not able to control, we want the Lord to be in control.
राहुनोस, जब जब हमिले, हमिला खाचो पढ़ने छो, जब जब, यो जियोन हम्रो हाथ दिखने, बाहिरा जादा जा, केदी वेला मत्र, हम प्रमुख लाय, प्रमुख तबले नियंत्रण मिलो।
But as we read through the Bible.
जब हमिले प्रतिशांको पढ़ने छो।
We find that it is just as important as making the Lord Jesus the savior of our lives, also to make him the supreme sovereign lord of our lives.
राहुनोस, हमिले यानी देखत छो, कि जुन्नी प्रकारले प्रमुख सुकृष्ट लाय, हमिले आपको मुक्तिदाता को रूप में, हमिले छिने और वहाँ ले, हमिले मुक्तिदाता को रूप में ब्राह्मण गरे, ऐसे प्रकारले वहाँ ले छी, हमलो जुन्नी, जियोन को सर्वच्छ प्रमुख, सर्वच्छ में हुनु परमेश्वर बने छिन।
There cannot be any areas in our lives where the Lord Jesus has been denied access to.
राहुनोस, हमलो जियोन मा, हमलो जियोन में नम्मा एस्तु कुरी बनी स्थान हुनु हुदैन, जाने रची प्रमुख सुकृष्ट लाची, पोस्नो दिखने इनकार गरे छो।
But you and I believers, you know that there are areas in our lives where we have put a barricade and told the Lord, "Don't come beyond this point."
राहुनोस, प्रिय रो, कबरा हमिला थाछ, हमलो जियोन मा, हमिले जियो, जियो तेस्तर तो जगहरु मा, हमिले छी, एकदमे तेने बाहर लगाने रहे छो, तेने रहे एकदमे प्रमुख तबले छी, याँची पोस्नो सप्तम हुन्ना भने छो।
Those of you who are familiar with computers, you know there are places where when we click, it says access denied.
राहुनोस, तबले चाल चाल सक्षम कंप्यूटर यूज़ गर्न हुन्छ, तेने रहे तबले एउना स्थान मा गोले, तेने फ्लिक गर्न हुन्छ, तेने रहे मंच यानी रची प्रवेश एकदम निशेच्छा।
Yes, no provision, you cannot access.
तबले कहाँ तेने रहे प्रवेश गर्नु सप्तम हुन्ना।
Yes dear brothers and sisters, but if we want to make the Lord Jesus, the Lord of our lives, he needs to have free access to anything and everything and anywhere in our life.
यस सत, प्रिय दाज भाई, दीदी पहनियो रो, यदि तबले आपने जियोन मा प्रमुख सुकृष्ट, संपूर्ण प्रकार को, एकदम नियंत्रण छानु हुन्छ, तिन्हों ले आपने जियोन को हरेक कुरा वहाँ पर इतिहास बने।
So now in this session, we are going to look at what is it to make the Lord, make the Lord Jesus the supreme sovereign lord of our lives.
राहुनोस, दोस्तों भागमा हमिले हेरे छो, कि यो छी एस्तु कुरची कुरो जो हो, जस्ती छी, प्रमुख सुकृष्ट लाची, हमलो जियोन को सब बंदा सर्वच्छ प्रमुख बने रह छैन सप्तम छो।
Because that is truly who he is.
तिन्हों ने यो सक्ते प्रकारले वहाँ वही हुनु हुन्छ।
He says, "I am the Lord, there is no one else."
तवले बने रहने छो, मो परमेश्वर हो, तेने कोई बनी छने मो भाई।
So in your life and my life, we need to give that priority, that new place, that prominence to the Lord Jesus to be the Lord.
राहुनोस, तबले को जियोन मा, मेरो जियोन मा प्रमुख सुकृष्ट, हमलो प्रमुख हो बनी गना, वहाँ ले, प्रमुखता दिनु पस, तेने सर्वच्छ स्थान अनलिखनु पस।
So now, by now you may understand that all of my points are being used with alliterations, the same letter beginning. With the same letter in English beginning for every heading.
आप तबले यो पुरम गुस्ल भया न, मले जुन्नी पुरम मनन गरे छु, तियो सब जुन्नी मनन को विषय हो छ, केची एवढाई लेक छो इंग्लिश, तेस बड़सुर मुहुंछ।
Firstly, the savior.
राहुनोस, पहिले छी हो मुक्तिदाता।
Now secondly, the supreme.
राहुनोस, दोस्तों छी एकदमी सर्वच्छ।
Now I am going to take that word supreme and...
राहुनोस, आपको यो जुन्नी सत, जुन्नी सर्वच्छ छ, पहले लिने छु।
S U P R E M E, seven, seven letters.
राहुनोस, इसमा S U P R E M E बने रह सात ओड़ सब्द छ।
And I am going to use that as an acronym and explain what is it to make the Lord the priority of our lives.
राहुनोस, यो जुन्नी सात ओड़ जुन्नी सब्द रह छ, इसले छी एकदम, तबला एकदम बयान गर्ने छ, इसले बताने छ, यो कुर रहे छ कसरी छी, परमेश्वर लाची, हमलो ईश्वर बनाउन।
Or the seven characteristics or the seven features that can be found in our lives when Jesus is the Lord of our lives.
और को सब्द मा भर्न बने, यो सात ओड़ा जुन्नी विशेष, कुर अरु, सात ओड़ा सवा अरु, जो हमलो जियोन मा होदैछ, जस्ती छी, प्रमुख सुकृष्ट लाय, हमलो प्रमुख बनाउन छ।
Now I know some of you might be calculating time now.
राहुनोस, मोला थाछ, तवर मक्कत छना समय हेरी रहेको वाला।
My, he said there are seven points.
ओह। उसले त सात ओड़ा पॉइंट बने, आप त बिझाने रहे छ।
What time is lunch then?
आ, आ, लंच को समझ चुकाइयो।
Today, don't know what is there for lunch, maybe biryani.
आज थाछैन, आज लंच मा चिकिये छ, उन्नु सक्षम छ, बिरयानी होला।
Don't know whether biryani is ready.
थाछैन, बिरयानी टेडी भएकी भएन।
He is saying seven points, don't know whether he will take another one and a half hours to finish seven points.
राहुनोस, उसले भन्दे छ, सात ओड़ा पॉइंट बनी गना, उन्नु सक्षम छ, अब अपने ओड़ा डेढ़ गणत्र समगली, आप एक कुरमा किना पस।
Don't worry, we are finishing in exactly twenty-five minutes.
राहुनोस, चित्तनागर्नोस, हमिले छी, एकदम एक पच्चीस मिनट माने एकदम खत्म हुन्छ।
But only you have a condition to fulfill.
तबले कुर एवढ़ा कुर छो, तेस तबले गर्नु पस।
When I tell you the Bible verse, you need to quickly turn to it and read it.
जब मले बाइबल सो पोतरु बन्द छो, तबले तुरंतै एकदम पटायेनु तेपोड़नु पस।
All of you must read it.
तबले सभैले पढ़नुहोस।
Okay, are you ready for the challenge?
यो, यो इसको नितम।
Are you ready to have lunch at twelve fifteen?
बारपन्नमा लंच लगि तयार हुनु हुन्छ।
Are you hungry?
तबले भोकाहु हुनु हुन्छ।
Tell me, tell me truthfully, are you hungry?
सक्ते प्रकारले तवर भोकाहिक छ।
Brother, they are not hungry, then shall we delay the lunch?
तवर भोकाहिक छैन, हमी आव यो जुन्नी खाने छ, तेपि डिले गर्ने छ।
Okay, I think children might be hungry.
सारे, सारे नानी रिस्क भोकाहिक हो।
Okay, so now we are going to use the word supreme and look at the seven characteristics in our lives when Jesus becomes the Lord of our lives.
राहुनोस, आव हमिले यो जुन्नी सुप्रीम मा बेकुल जुन्नी सात ओड़ा जुन्नी बेवार को कुर होले हेरे छ, जस्ती छी, हमलो जियोन मा, प्रमुख सुकृष्ट लाची, हमलो एकदमे सर्वच्छ परमेश्वर बताउन छ।
The first letter S is for submission and surrender.
राहुनोस, पहिलो जुन्नी सब्द, जुन्नी S सब, जिसको अर्थ हो, एकदमे समर्पण गोल्लू, राहुनोस, आपले आपले और्पण गोल्लू।
Now I know it is very difficult to get this in translation.
राहुनोस, मोला थाछ, यो कुर अरु एकदमा अनुवाद गर्नु, एकदमा सजलो साहिन।
But just write it or find, just go as it comes.
जुन्नी प्रकारले आए रहे छ, तेव प्रकारले तबले लिखनु हो।
First one is S is for submission and surrender.
राहुनोस, सर्व बंदा जुन्नी S छ, तेस को हो, अर्थ हो, हमिले छी, समर्पण गर्नु पस, आपले आपले और्पण गर्ने।
Okay, now we are going to read Ephesians 5:22, Ephesians 5:22.
एफ एस इ, पांच को, पास पर।
Oh, you are slow, then lunch is going to be delayed.
हे पत्नी हरु हो, प्रमुख को अधिमा रह, आपको रह, आपको पत्नी हो, अधिमा सुपा।
Ah, when I said lunch, immediately you started reading, yes, there we find it says, "Wives submit to your husbands as unto the Lord."
राहुनोस, यानी रो, हमिले देखि रहे छ, कि परमेश्वर ले बनी रहे छ, कि पत्नी हर्ले छी, आपनो पति को अधिमा आपले आपले सुपा बनी गना।
There he is talking, there he is talking about the responsibility of the wives.
राहुनोस, यानी रो, पत्नी हरु को जिम्मेवारी को विषय में बताइ रहे छ।
Now I am not going to talk about that, this is not marriage counselling session.
राहुनोस, यानी रो, कुरे पुनि विला को विषय में, बार वार्ता ला भएकछन, अधिमा दिकुर।
But there it says, that submission as unto the Lord.
राहुनोस, यानी रो छी, यो अधित्याग को जुन्नी विषय छ, यो छी परमेश्वर को अधित्याग हो।
So that was implies that we need to submit, we need to surrender to the Lord.
राहुनोस, यो कुरची बहुत छ, इसले छी बताइ रहे छ, हमिले छी, आपले आपला, परमेश्वर कान समर्पण गर्नु पस।
Dear brothers and sisters, when we make the Lord Jesus the Lord of our lives, our lives will be a life of submission and surrender.
यस सत, प्रिय दाज भाई, दीदी पहनियो रो, जब हमिले प्रमुख सुकृष्ट लाय, आपने जियोन को मुक्तिदाता बनाउन छ, तेस को पसात, हमलो जियोन छी, परमेश्वर मा एउड़ा समर्पित जियोन हुन्छ।
We will not do all what we want to do.
हमिले छ, जे मन परे तेही गर्दैन।
We will not have authority over our, and say over our things.
राहुनोस, हमिले अपने कुर अरु मा, हमलो अधिकार हुदैन।
But in all things, we will submit, we will surrender it to the Lord.
राहुनोस, सभै कुर मा, आपले आपले और्पण करिन, परमेश्वर को अधित्यागमा रह।
We will surrender our will.
राहुनोस, ईचाल्ला हमें अधित्यागमा दिन्छ।
We will surrender our will.
राहुनोस, जुन्नी संपत्ति रह, हमिले दिन्छ।
We will surrender our wisdom.
राहुनोस, ज्ञान हमिले दिन्छ।
We will surrender all what we have and submit it to the Lord.
राहुनोस, भाई को सभै कुर हमिले और्पण करिन, आपला परमेश्वर को अधित्यागमा रह।
That happens only when the Lord Jesus is the Lord of our lives.
तिन्हों ने, प्रमुख सुकृष्ट छी, हमलो जियोन को परमेश्वर बनु।
There will not be a saying, "You say, 'No, my way,' this is the way I do it, this is the way I want it, this has to be done."
राहुनोस, तेती गरी तबले यो मनु सप्तम हुन्न, कि यस प्रकारले मुखर्ना छ, यस प्रकारले काम भाई को, यस प्रकारले होज बनियन, तबले बनु सप्तम।
We will, if the Lord is the Lord of our lives.
यदि परमेश्वर हमलो जियोन को ईश्वर हुनु हुन्छ, तिन्हे।
Then we will surrender and submit it all to the Lord.
तेस को पसात छी, हमिले आपले आपले और्पण करिन, संपूर्ण प्रकारले वहाँ अधित्यागमा हुन्छ।
So if we make the Lord Jesus the priority, make him as the Lord, then our lives can be seen, that there is, everything is submissive to the Lord, everything is surrendered to the Lord, we will not claim any ownership over anything.
यदि हमिले आपने जियोन ले प्रमुख सुकृष्ट लिंकी, यदि आपले गरे बने, हमलो जियोन मा कुरे बनी एस्तु कुर अरु हुदैन, जस्तै हमिले अधिकार जमनु सक्छ, या यो मेरो होती, मेरो हुनु होदैन।
In other words, there will not be any room for self, for me.
राहुनोस, और को सब्द मा भर्न बने, तिन्हों रो, मेरा निम्ती, या मो बने कुर बनी स्थान हुदैन।
See, very often we are full of ourselves.
राहुनोस, देरे जोडी हमिले मो, मो बने कर्छ।
We always say, "Me, my, I," those are, those are our attitudes.
राहुनोस, देरे जोडी हमें भनी रहेको हुन्छ, मो, मेरो, मेरो, यस्तो प्रकार को हम्म प्रभार हुन्छ।
But when the Lord Jesus is the Lord of our lives.
प्रमुख सुकृष्ट जब हमलो जियोन को ईश्वर बनु हुन्छ।
It is always he.
जिची सदै गो वहाने हो।
It is always the Lord.
तेने केवल वहाँ प्रमुख हुन्छ।
There is surrender and submission to the Lord.
तेने र समर्पण, र वहाँ को अधित्याग हुन्छ।
Now we are going to the next one.
राहुनोस, और को मा जान छो।
1 Corinthians 8:6.
पहिलो कुरन्ती 806 पर।
All together, shall we all read together? Yes, someone, some young person is reading, yes.
आ, परमेश्वर।
Okay, let us read all together, he is hungry, that's why he is reading, okay, all together.
राहुनोस, निक्ती चाहि, एकमात्र परमेश्वर हुन्छ, पतिता जस्ता आता, सभै कुर अरु भएका छ, अनि हमी वहाँ मा छो, अनि एकमात्र प्रमुख होन्छ, तेने सुपेश, जो तर सभै कुर अरु भएका हो, अनि हमी खुआ द्वारानी हो।
Here we have the second letter U.
यानी रची, आपो हम्रो मा, दोस्तों जुन्नी सब्द छ, तेने U बन्ने छ।
By U, U stands for uncompromising devotion.
राहुनोस, यानी रो, U लेची, हमिले बताउन छ, कुरे बनी प्रकार को, हमिले, कुरे नि प्रकार ले तेकुर अरु, कोसे संग, हमिले बार छोड़ करिन, कुरे नि प्रकार को, यो कुर अरु न गरिन, हमिले वहाँ को सेवाया गरिको।
Uncompromising devotion, U stands for that.
U लेची, हमिले बताउन छ, कि हमिले छी, कोसे संग, कुरे नि प्रकार को, यो कोम्प्रोमाइज़ गरन, या मेरी लिखन न गरिन, भाई को।
There you find, when we make the Lord Jesus the Lord of our lives, we will not compromise, we will not mix things, dilute things.
इसको अर्थ यो जब हमिले प्रमुख सुकृष्ट लाय, हमलो जियोन को प्रमुखता दिदा छ, केदी वेला हमी कुरे बनी, कुरो संग, हमिले छी, एकदमे सहज पुर्वकी संग, हमी कुरो मिला देन।
We cannot say, "Okay, we want to enjoy sin and we also want to have the Lord."
राहुनोस, हमिले भनु, भनु सक्छ, होदै कि, हमी एकदमे यो जुन्नी कुर छ, इसको आनंद परिलिंचो, प्रमुख आपनी रह।
We won't say, "I will keep one leg on the, one foot in the world and one foot with the Lord."
राहुनोस, यो भन्न सक्न न हो, कि हमिले यो एउड़ा कुटा संचार मा, एउड़ा केका प्रमुख मा रह।
I will, we will not say, "Okay, I want this also and I want this also."
हमिले यो भन्न सक्न न हो, कि मोला यो पनी चाहिन्छ, अनि यो पनी चाहिन्छ।
But when the Lord Jesus is the Lord of our lives, there is uncompromising devotion to the Lord.
राहुनोस, प्रमुख सुकृष्ट जब हमलो जियोन को ईश्वर बनु हुन्छ, तेने र कुरे बनी प्रकार को समझोता बने कुरो हुदैन।
We will not anything or anything to take that place that is due to the Lord.
राहुनोस, तेने र कुरे बनी एस्तो जगह हुदैन, जर्ज छी, प्रमुख सुकृष्ट हमिले दिनु सक्ने।
Dear brothers and sisters, today in the lives of believers, this has become a big problem.
राहुनोस, प्रिय दाज भाई, दीदी पहनियो रो, आज अपनी ईश्वर को विशास को जियोन मा, एउड़ा तुल्ल समस्या भएक्छ।
As we look back at our lives during the last two and a half, three years, this COVID has completely missed us completely.
यदि हमिले आज अपनो यो, दुयो दुई बस औरे बस अपने, हमिले आपने जियोन मेरे बने, यो जुन्नी कोमिक छ, कि हमलो जियोन एकदमे छतिकत्त गोले पस।
It has made our devotion to the Lord that we have now began to compromise our devotion to the Lord.
राहुनोस, यो जुन्नी कुर अरु छी, हमलो जुन्नी जियोन मा, जुन्नी प्रमुख को निम्ती जुन्नी सेकाय छ, तेस एकदमे समझोता मले रख खड़ा गरे।
Because we were not able to gather together, we started online meetings.
तिन्हों ने, हमी एक साथ भेला हुनु सके को ठेन न हो, तेस को पसात, हमिले ऑनलाइन मीटिंग शुरू करे।
But now when we are able to gather together also.
राहुनोस, आज अपनी जब हमी फेरी बिनी भेला हुनु सके रहे छ।
We feel comfortable to stay at home and follow online meetings.
राहुनोस, हम इसी एकदमे घर मा बसी गना, एकदमे ऑनलाइन मीटिंग गना, एकदमे मन कर्ते हो।
So while the resaid is going on.
राहुनोस, जब मैसेज भए रहेको हुन्छ।
While the service is going on.
जब सेकाय भए रहेको हुन्छ।
We are eating, drinking.
हमी खाए रहेको हुन्छ, भी रहेको हुन्छ।
Washing and cleaning.
त्वीर रहेको हुन्छ।
Doing all the household work.
सभै घर को काम गरे रहेको हुन्छ।
Washing the car.
कार बसपा गरे रहेको हुन्छ।
Doing all what we need. We are multitasking. Now that is compromised devotion. But when we make the Lord, Jesus has the Lord of our lives. There should be uncompromising devotion seen in our lives. Whatever is due to the Lord, we will give it to the Lord, we will not allow anything else to take that place of the Lord. Whether it is our Bible reading time, prayer time, fellowship time, meeting time, whatever it may be. There will be uncompromising devotion if we give the Lord Jesus the place as Lord in our lives. Now S is over, U is over, what is the next letter? S, we have looked at S. We looked at U. What is the next letter? P. Now we are going to read a verse for that. Luke six forty six. Yes, there we find. The Lord is asking, why do you call me Lord, Lord, and you won't do what I say or my will? So, P stands for purposeful living. Purposeful living, purpose that the will of God be performed in our lives. The Lord Jesus said, why are you calling me Lord, Lord, and not doing the things that I say? Today, this is the case of many believers. They go about talking, Lord Jesus, Lord Jesus, Lord, 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 but he is not the Lord of their lives. Ah, Prabhu is only for the world, but he is not the Prabhu of the life. But if we make the Lord Jesus the Lord of our lives. That can be seen because there will be purposeful living, where we will say, no, I will do the will of God. The will of God has to be accomplished in my life. Dear brothers and sisters, is this the purpose of your life? Are you saying, yes, I want to fulfill the purpose, the will of God in my life? Or are you saying, let anything happen, let me just go with life like this? But if the Lord Jesus is the supreme Lord of your life. There will be purposeful living in your life. All the meaning of your life, the meaning of your living would be so that the purpose and will of God be accomplished in your life. So P is for purposeful living. What is the next? What is the next letter? R, yes. Psalm eighty nine seven. Psalm eighty nine seven. Those of you who are hungry can start reading. Yes, God is greatly, greatly to be feared in the assembly of his saints. So R stands for reverential fear, reverential fear. That is the fear of God will be found in our lives. Dear brothers and sisters, when we make the Lord Jesus the Lord of our lives. Our lives will be governed and controlled by the fear of God in our lives. What is the fear of God? Is it like getting scared for a cockroach or a lizard or any insect? What is the fear of God? That is the knowledge that. God is watching. God can hear. And God knows. Okay, shall I repeat it? What is the fear of God? To know or to have that knowledge. That God is watching, he can see everything what I am doing. God can hear all what I am talking, even what I say in secret. God knows everything, even the thoughts in my heart. That is the fear of God. And when the Lord Jesus is the Lord of our lives, we will be governed by that fear of God. And when our lives are governed by the fear of God, there will be a whole new perspective to our lives. Today, many believers are living without the fear of God in their lives. If you look at the way they are behaving, you cannot find any iota of fear of God in their life. But the person who knows the Lord Jesus has the Lord and has given that new place to the Lord in his life. You can see the reverential fear of God in his life. Okay, what is the next letter? Y, yes. Matthew ten twenty five. Matthew ten twenty five. Yes, I know the young people are hungry, that's what they are reading. There we find. It is said, if they call the Lord Jesus a demon possessed, bil sibub. What will they not call the disciples of the Lord Jesus, those who follow the Lord Jesus? And when they call the Lord Jesus bil sibub. In other places, they call the Lord Jesus a greedy man. They even call the Lord Jesus a drunkard. They call the Lord Jesus a madman. What did the Lord Jesus do? Tell me, what did the Lord Jesus do? At least tell me, if they called you with such names, what will you do? What do you think? If someone looked at you and called you a greedy, what would you do? He won't have teeth to eat his food after that. But what does the Lord Jesus do? He just simply endured, he endured, he tolerated, he did not react to it. So E stands for example of endurance. Example of endurance. The Lord Jesus knew that God, the Father was in total control. So no matter what people thought about him, said about him, did against him, he did not react to those. But he simply tolerated it. He did not open his mouth. He did not threaten them and say, I will kill you well and properly. But he endured all that. So when we make the Lord Jesus the Lord of our lives. We will be like our Lord and our Master. Where we will be an example of endurance. If anyone speaks to us or doesn't speak to us. If they say good or bad about us. If they take notice of us or ignore us. Whatever they may say or do against us. If the Lord Jesus is the Lord of our lives. We will just maintain a very quiet spirit and we will not react and retaliate. Yes, dear brothers and sisters, are we like that? Are we like that? If we are like that, then that means the Lord Jesus is the Lord of our lives. That means the Lord Jesus has been given that new place of being the Lord of our lives. So E is the example of endurance. What is the next letter? M, yes. Luke one forty six. Psalm ninety six eight. Psalm ninety six eight. Yes, there it speaks of magnifying the Lord, giving God the glory that is due unto him. So M stands for mindful of magnifying. M stands for mindful of magnifying God or glorifying God. Those who have given the Lord Jesus that due place as Lord of their lives. Will always magnify and glorify the Lord Jesus. They will never attract any glory or any glory and honor to their own self. They will not go everywhere, put up their flag and say, oh, I did this, I am the one. They will not show themselves as big and great. But all their focus would be, whatever happens is to bring glory and honor to God. To magnify God. So only God will be given that prominent place. When people look into their lives. They will not see that person, but they will see Jesus enthroned in their lives. That is the characteristic of a person who has made the Lord Jesus as the Lord and given priority to him in life. What about you? Are you attracting glory, honor, prestige towards you? Or are you always concerned and working on magnifying God, glorifying God, giving the glory that is due unto him? So M stands for mindful of magnifying. Okay, the last one, what is the last letter? Yes, E, Romans fourteen eight and nine. Romans fourteen eight and nine. So E stands for eminent attitude, eminent attitude, the only attitude in life. What was that eminent attitude in life? Whether I live or die. That is in him. That is by him. It is for him. So whatever happens in my life. It is all for God's sake. That is the mindset of those who have made the Lord Jesus the Lord of their lives. Dear brothers and sisters, do you have that eminent attitude in your life? You may be going through difficulties in life. You may be facing so many problems in life. You may be faced with various sicknesses in life. You may be faced with many challenges in life. There may be family problems, economic problems, so many problems in your life. Whether it is good times or bad times. Whether it is prosperity or poverty. Is your attitude that in all things, God should be given the preeminence. It is, it is the Lord Jesus who is with me and who is going to take me through all these. This is the attitude, this eminent attitude, this very, when I say eminent attitude, this very prominent attitude will be seen when we make the Lord Jesus the Lord of our lives. So dear brothers and sisters, today as we close, we have looked at two priorities in our lives. The first priority is the Savior. The second priority is the Supreme. And we have looked, if we make the Lord Jesus the Lord Supreme in our lives, the servant characteristics that will be found in our lives. Now look at your life and see whether these are found in your life. This will show you, this will prove to you whether the Lord Jesus has the priority in your life. Let us close our eyes and conclude in prayer. Our gracious and loving heavenly Father. Our great wonder-working God. With hearts of full thanksgiving and grateful adoration, we worship thee, we magnify thee. We thank thee, showing our lives, our hearts to me and to us. Thanking thee for the theme which you have given unto us. The first priority in our lives to make thee as a Savior of our lives. Thanking thee, thou art, will have a supreme and sovereignty over all our lives. Taking this supreme word and revealing unto us all the seven characters. Whether we could give our submission and surrender to thee. Many times you have compromised, lived an uncompromised life. And we have forgotten our purpose of living. Where we have to give reverence, we could not give. Though we may not use as a personal, but we could not live as an example of endurance. Lord, where we are not mindful to magnify thee. Our attitudes are not giving eminence at thee. Thanking thee, thou art spoken to us. Thou knowest all our weaknesses. Our failures in short term. There is none better than anybody. Everyone's fallen short is of. Lord, thank you for thy loving kindnesses and opportunity given unto us to set right our lives. There is be a new beginning in our lives. That we may come back to you. And set an example to live as a supreme. Thanking thee, using thy servant in our lives. Thanking thee for the transgression. Thanking thee for all the past activities thou have done to us. As we have an afternoon service for the children ready. God bless our time together. Thanking thee for the work here and delivering with every prayer unto us. Thank you Lord for being with us and blessing our time together. Lord, for this prayer and thanksgiving in the mighty name of your awesome Savior.